All right, welcome to Cleveland Heights City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is March 3 at 6:02. I guess I'll call the roll. Maddox?
Here.
Posh? Russell?
Here.
Con?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Petrus?
Here.
Tuda?
Here.
So, we're here to discuss, this is a public hearing for a zoning map change, ordinance number 245-2024, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Director Zanth. Thank you, Director. Planning Director Zanth.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. So, we're here for a public hearing tonight, and the org operations is, since this is a request of an applicant, we're going to have the applicant come up and speak first, and then Karen will give our staff report, and then, of course, the main event is really to hear from the public here today. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Josh or David, and I'm assuming this is yours right here, right?
And while Josh is coming up, if anybody wants to speak, you can sign up on the, yeah, sorry, wasn't up there before, but if you'd like to speak, just fill out the paper that Rachel's over there doing.
Hi, good evening. My name is Josh Rosen. I'm with the applicant. My role here, I just want to briefly give a little background. I'm going to turn it over to David Cron, our owner's rep, who could walk you through the reason for the request and the thinking we've done. But just to mention, so far, we've had a number of meetings, both with the Planning Commission, with Landmarks, we've also had a number of community meetings going back for the last couple of years. So, this product isn't just, kind of came to us very quickly, but this is something we've been working towards in collaboration with others for a long time. So, with that said, I'll try to answer any questions that come up, but I'd like David to address the meat of the presentation. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly, as this presentation was originally put together for the Planning Commission, so it has a bit more detail than maybe is needed, but in speaking with the city planning department, we thought it might be helpful to give a general overview of the project. So, just to give a sense of the timeline, you know, we've been, as Josh mentioned, through several meetings with the Planning Commission, and we probably have three more with them, and anywhere upwards of about 10 total city meetings that are currently in the works. This is just a quick list of all of those meetings, about halfway through the process, as we've currently projected it to be looking to start activities on the site, just in terms of big picture, sometime in the fall. So, we have plenty of runway here and lots of opportunities for more input and public input, and, of course, feedback from the city specifically. As part of this process, should you grant the approval of the S2 zoning map change, this is all of the documents that are required as part of that development plan, a very long list, a very detailed list of the types of things we would be producing and working very closely with the planning department on, on a weekly basis of all of those materials. Just a quick snapshot of the masterpiece that Eric Mendelson designed, is Park Synagogue, originally constructed in 1950, the schooling completed in 1953. There are actually quite a few buildings on the site besides the synagogue, so just a quick tour around the 28 acres there. We have the Boiler House, which is in fairly disrepair and would need to come down, so it would be slated for demolition there. The mikva, which is active and remains, is a ceremonial bath house for a consortium of synagogues in the region. Kangasser Hall, its fate to be unknown at this point, but logically, it might come down shortly after construction, that's what's currently planned. The bridge that connects it to the synagogue, not original, but beautiful experience for those who have not been on it, as it embraces and overlooks the ravine. Synagogue itself, the school wing, obviously, as mentioned, I don't want to leave out, of course, the daycare, which is active and will remain on the site for the foreseeable future. So, just a quick snapshot of the existing conditions of all those buildings, just aforementioned as it stands today. This is a preliminary development plan that we've put together, showing the potential for the long-term future. We don't have a specific date for this, we're sort of generically calling it, you know, 10 years out, or maybe 2035, 2040, what have you, but this shows all of the potential development that could happen around the historic synagogue once it's restored. As mentioned, a couple buildings would come down, a small addition would be put on the synagogue to upgrade it in mechanical systems, that's already been reviewed by the Landmarks and the Architectural Board of Review, and a series of different phased opportunities for residential development. Couple things I want to point out about the arrangement of this site. For one, it's been divided into three parcels. The synagogue itself sits on the central parcel, which starts at the Mayfield Road entry drive, as it stands today, and then works its way along the stream and engulfs the synagogue. This was very specifically delineated to capture the original view shed that Mendelson, we believe, designed the building around. It was some of his earliest sketches from the competition that he won, designed it in the first place. Then there's a south parcel to Euclid Heights Boulevard, that's where we're imagining in this first phase, labeled as C1 on this drawing, potentially 15 townhouses. C2 might follow, but as I mentioned, the daycare will stay for the foreseeable future, so we would not take the daycare out for development of residential until we had a new home for it here on the site, which would be the intent. And on the north side of the site, parcel A, along Mayfield, it has the most logical development opportunities, with the bus parking, a former bus parking lot is there along Mayfield today, as well as up behind the mikva, as well as potentially where Kangasser and the Boiler House might come down and potentially become opportunities for resident development. So, another thing I really want to point out about this is the historic boundary, shown in purple there, it's a little hard to read on this screen if you're a little far away, but that historic boundary basically starts at the end of Sycamore and Ivy Dale, down by the preliminary text there, and comes around the former Kangasser Hall. That historic boundary is where the National Park Service is holding us to, this is a national landmark, that everything within that boundary needs to be subservient to the temple itself. This is a very important detail, because we would not intend, nor would we be allowed, to build anything of significant scale on the south side of that historic boundary. So, you might note that every one of those bubbles, whether it's C1, C2, A3, or A4, are all limited in height to 35 feet, which is a pretty magic number for Cleveland Heights, because it's also the limit of a single-family residential dwelling, and that's been a very intentional height, the National Park Service has approved that height, for instance, the C1 townhouses as a respectful and meaningful height, not just to the synagogue, but for the context itself. Then, for the A1, A2 buildings along Mayfield, they're on the north side of the historic boundary, were not held to that same restriction, so those could be much taller. This is the overall matrix of the proposed development, should this be rezoned to S2. I do want to note that under S2, it does not have a specific development density, but it typically refers to rather MF3 or multifamily 3, which is 750 square feet per unit. So, in other words, if we were to develop this site entirely within, say, an M3 development, we would be able to do upwards of, I believe that's 1,200 units. Of course, we're not getting anywhere near that, we're roughly 400 units is what we're proposing, so less than a third of that allowable. And this is really important, because if I page back a couple, while the historic synagogue is a very important aspect to this site, it's really the site itself that's super important to this group and to the community at large. Mendelson intentionally sited the synagogue on the dugway brook, on the edge of the ravine, and it is really the beauty and natural asset of this site that is the enduring quality that reinforces and surrounds the synagogue. So, it's very important that this development is not overburdened to the overall development, and we believe that the S2, and I think you'll hear this from the planning department as well, helps preserve those natural resources. I also want to mention that we have done detailed tree surveys of all of the natural trees through this area, anything over six inches as required by the zoning code, and we're happy to report that while there are a number of beautiful trees on the site, many of them unfortunately are not in great shape, both in their own health, or many of them are fighting a disease, we have a lot of beech leaf disease and other things on the site. So, it is our intent to save as many of those trees as possible, to replace as many as we can, but just know that while, at first glance, the site and the trees look relatively healthy, we have had Davey Resource Group in here, giving us a more honest assessment of that. It is our intent to salvage as many as possible, and in fact, we've designed some of these first phases, this townhouse and some of the new roadways, specifically to dodge and work around existing trees, we've moved drives, we've repositioned everything we could to make sure to preserve those natural resources. And again, I want to remind you that the entire parcel B, which engulfs the synagogue and most of the ravine, is sacrosanct, there is no development being planned for that, it's just for the preservation of both historic and natural resources on the site. So, here's a quick zoom in of those townhouses. Again, you see there's some perimeter trees on the outside, they're a little hard to make out, but they're the solid dots, and there's more ghostly trees, and then the proposed trees, quite a few, and this few would be the solid, more circular trees indicated here. As noted, 15 townhouses would be proposed, should this zoning move forward, and again, that limit of 35 feet in height, I just want to point out, and that is it for this piece of it.
I just want to interject something here. Go ahead.
Good. Could you go back to the last slide?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I think you said 15 townhouses, so the one building says 30 units?
Right, so these are townhouse apartments, so rather than a garage on the ground floor, they have apartments on the lower level.
Great.
So, that means that there's a lower-level apartment and an upper-level apartment, so that's why it's 30.
Thirty units.
Yep, 15 townhouses, 30 units, you got it. Yeah, and if we just jump back to the matrix for a second, that's the case across the sites. You see there, if you scroll your eye down to C2 and work your way right, that's 30 units, C1, same size, A3, same size, and these would be maximum densities we could ever imagine, as is the heights as well, it's a maximum. All right. Should we transition to the planning department? Any other questions?
How many, how many buildings are we talking about?
Well, this is what was, is currently imagined right now, so the historic building would remain with the bridge and the addition, and then a remaining potential seven buildings overall in the development of the site, but of course, we already have the mikva, that makes eight, and the synagogue, nine, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just talking about how many you're going to build.
New buildings, yep, seven, so A1 through C2.
And are they all part of the same, how many phases are we talking about, and how many would be with each?
Right, so right now, the only phase that we have planned right now is just this one phase, so the restoration, preservation of synagogue, and the 15 townhouses, 30 units. The other phases are unknown at this time, that's just a vision for the entire future development over many years.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Karen Knittle, the Assistant Planning Director. I thought I'd start talking while I'm trying to get this up and going for you. So, as you heard, we're here tonight to talk about zoning, zoning map change, and really, that's all we're considering tonight, and I'll get into more of the balance of the permissions that would need to be reviewed and then approved as this development moves forward, should the zoning map change take place. So, currently, you can see that the parcels are zoned MF1, multifamily 1, along Mayfield Road, that's about where most of us know where the bus parking has been for the last few years, and then the balance is A, single-family. The proposal is for those, that entire site, to be rezoned to S2. In order to accomplish the redevelopment of the site envisioned by the applicant, as we just heard, the site zoning has to be changed. The proposed redevelopment is for a unified campus approach, and the most appropriate zoning for this is the S2 mixed-use district. Any zoning map change, as you know, follows Chapter 1119, which this public hearing is part of. So, let me review what an S2 mixed-use district is for you. So, the S2 plan development is intended to offer incentives for creative development in areas that have a special characteristic, and I think we all agree that this site has the park synagogue, which is a historic building, which is special and we want to see preserved, as well as the natural landscaping on that site. So, the open brook is important, as well as the amount of green space that's on it. A second major incentive or purpose of the S2 plan development is to ensure that development occurs within a unified manner according to a development plan. And then the third is to encourage sustainable development practices, and while we didn't hear about it, I do know that the team that's doing this development has many sustainable approaches that they intend to implement on this site, and of course, we'd hear more about that should this move forward. So, how does the S2 mixed-use district work? So, the first, it's a two-step process, so tonight, we're really here just to talk about the zoning map change, and this is just for the development site, and the zoning map change alone does not allow for all the redevelopment we just discussed. However, it's the first step is to approve the map change, so that the redevelopment process can go through the Planning Commission and then get approved. The second step, and this is the most important step, I think, for all of us to understand, is that the S2 development requires a development plan, and this development plan gets reviewed by the Planning Commission, and development guidelines will get written. This includes the design guidelines, and they all have to be reviewed, and a conditional use permit issued. So, as we heard, we're talking about a phased approach in this development, each time we get to a next phase, the detailed plans need to be reviewed, submitted to the Planning Commission and reviewed, and that conditional use and approval granted, based on them following the guidelines and the plan. So, the development plan is specific for the redevelopment of this site, so the rules and what we see will be written, that's why it's important for them to kind of map out areas that they think potential redevelopment might take place, and to think through what they think they would like to see there. If modified, so in the future, if there's something on that plan they would like to change or not include anymore, they have to come back to the Planning Commission, who has to review that development plan and modify it, and then the conditional use is within the plan, and each phase development, again, would have to be reviewed and approved. So, the design guidelines set forth policies, including how much density, how tall buildings are allowed to be, the building envelope, building height, allowable density, parking, and in this instance too, I would imagine we'll see something about the open space and preserving that natural landscaping, and how that can be ensured in future years, as well as the historic property, how it will be maintained. So, just a reminder of rules, this is one of our favorite slides we like to give, it's just a reminder of where, which boards and commissions do what, and it's a good reminder for all of us. So, the zoning map change request was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they did recommend approval and sent it back to city council, which is why we're holding the public hearing tonight. The Architectural Board of Review will be reviewing any architectural materials and the overall look of the buildings, and is it appropriate for that site. The Board of Zoning Appeal will review any variances that may need to be considered, and as you know, for a variance to be granted, there has to be practical difficulty present, and the board has to find that. Staff is here to help guide the process and help them go through the various boards and commissions, and then there will be a final landscape plan that gets reviewed and approved. So, as you know, we do have a tree replacement plan, so any trees that have to come down need to be replaced, but we're also going to want to see how each of those buildings are landscaped, and then how does that blend into the balance of the site. And of course, city council reviews the zoning map change, and also the development plan requests recommendations that will be sent to you from the Planning Commission, and you will also then review and consider any financing or development agreement that may or may not occur with this project. So, here we are in the schedule, and so you'll see, I'm going to quickly go through, I won't read all the dates, but we've already had multiple steps in this process with some of our boards and commissions. The Planning Commission has reviewed the conditional use for adaptive reuse of the synagogue, and that's been approved, they've also approved a conditional use permit for the mikva, to continue operating as a freestanding, independent mikva, as opposed to being an accessory used to a religious or a place of worship. And then they did review and recommended approval of the zoning map change to S2, that was done in January. So, then we will go on, and you'll see that tonight, we're here for the purpose is for this zoning map hearing. So, coming up, March 4, actually, Landmark is not going to be reviewing this tomorrow, there'll be a special meeting, probably in April, we're hoping, early April, to review the synagogue restoration and the proposed townhouses all at one time by the Landmark Commission, because the entire site is a landmark, anything that happens on the property has to go through our Landmark Commission for review, even though the National Park Service is involved because of the historic property. So, in April or May, Landmark will do a final certificate of appropriateness. May 14, Planning Commission will begin, I mean, in April, I'm sorry, Planning Commission will begin writing and looking at potential guidelines, so that's an important meeting to come and talk to us if you're the public, so if there's particular issues you're concerned about, that would be a good time for us to hear about those issues and see whether or not it's appropriate to have a guideline or a rule regarding that. And then we think that in May, Planning Commission may be in a position where they would be ready to make a final recommendation. City Council would then get the S2 plan development for guidelines to consider and approve in June, and then we anticipate that in June, ABR would receive requests to review the And so, obviously, all of these, there's the opportunity for public input around those topics. So, for tonight, council should, when we're done with me, open the public hearing and listen to the public and any comments they may have, and then after the public hearing, should council choose to, you can close the public hearing, and then staff would recommend that council adopt the second reading of ordinance number 245-2024.
All right, well, thank you very much. How many people are planning on speaking? Okay, just three? Okay. I don't have the forms, but Rachel, you can go first.
Well, I wrote out some comments, but Peter and I live in a house on Compton Road that backs onto Park Synagogue, and in fact, those townhouses are going to be built behind our house, we know that. And we've lived here since 19--
Talk into the mic.
We've lived here since 1990, and it's been wonderful to be able to walk through the park, it's beautiful, it's quiet, the synagogue and the buildings are amazing, but we've been watching it decline, because once a congregation left and moved out to Park Synagogue East, things are declining, the stream gets blocked up, the tuck pointing isn't happening, the landscaping is extremely minimal, and so, it's been kind of sad to watch that. So, we've been thrilled when Sustainable Community Associates got involved. We helped convene the first meeting to talk about what was going to happen with Park Synagogue on our deck some years ago now, maybe four years, with a number of folks before they even got involved. And so, we've been very appreciative that Josh and Naomi have made themselves very accessible to the community and to neighbors around the park, and as well as our local group, Boulevard Neighbors. So, we have a list of about 80 households in Boulevard Neighbors, and there's about 50 households on Compton. I keep, I maintain the email list for both, and so, we've tried to keep people abreast of what's happening, and we've had a number of Zoom meetings with developers, they have always been open to our questions and our input, and we've just been really appreciative of that. And I think it's fair to say that the great majority of folks in the neighborhood are very, feel very positive about what the plans are, and we're just thrilled that this treasure in our midst is going to be saved, and we have a lot of faith in Sustainable Community Associates, looking at their track record and what they've done other places to do it right. And really, this is the way development should be in our community, with input and considering, it's going to be a new neighborhood, no fence around it, paths through it, it's going to be a new neighborhood, and we're just really excited to see how it's going to develop.
Thank you. Peter, you want to go next?
Adam.
Oh, Adam, would you like to go next? Just state your name and the street you live on.
I'm Adam, I live on Compton Road, I'm an architect and master planner. As Rachel said, while my neighbors and I are all very excited about the prospect of renovating and revitalizing the historic synagogue structure, I think the proposed plans that I've seen thus far for the building are wonderful. Many of us, contrary to what Rachel has said, the people I've spoke to are not terribly excited about necessarily all of the proposed plans for the 28 acres of the site. I bought my home six years ago, when perhaps the biggest selling feature for me was the serene and quiet backyard. Compton Road residents have been very fortunate to have nothing but trees, wildlife, occasional dog walkers, and minimal vehicular traffic behind our homes since the 1950s. The site, like I said, is currently zoned for residential, which is 7,500 square feet of property per unit. What is being proposed now reduces that number, it's 25 units for a single acre, and will allow this developer and any future developers, that's the key word, future developers, to put 35-foot-tall structures 25 feet from our property lines, peering down into our previously private and serene backyards. This is not the character of the neighborhood that we signed up for. Regardless of these particular developers, what they say, and how sustainable they may be, and I do believe that to be the case, the fact remains that rezoning at S2 for the entire site, the entire site, allows for upwards of 500 units to be built in the future, and allows for commercial uses to be constructed down the line. Again, that may not be part of the current plan, but as we all know, Severance Town Center was once 161 acres of woodlands, and I doubt the council that approved that rezoning envisioned what is currently on the site. All that aside, my requests and proposals are simple, I understand that both change and development are imminent, there are approximately four acres of impervious, unsightly, and unused asphalt on the north of the site on Mayfield, which is currently zoned multifamily. This site has two access drives, direct access to public utilities, access to public transportation, and space for almost 100 dwelling units per code. This site would have no negative impact on the surrounding trees, wildlife, or natural environment, it would also have no impact on the neighbors of the synagogue property. Beginning there with Phase 1 of any medium-density residential construction would add much-needed improvements to the streetscape of Mayfield, improve the site from an environmental standpoint, and still supplement any and all revitalization efforts of the historic building. I'm almost done. It feels irresponsible to me that developers' first choice for new construction of this campus would be directly behind neighbors' homes. There is only one single drive on the south of the site from Euclid Heights Boulevard. The single driveway currently sits between two single-family homes on a residential street. The proposed construction and renovation would add upwards of 200 cars a day entering and leaving through a single access point. The zoning required, requires one parking space per 400 square feet of commercial use and university functions. This means that the existing building could require as many as 250 parking spaces. The 20, now 30 proposed apartments at the south end of the site eliminate much of that parking, likely necessitating the developers to seek yet another variance. As much as I respect the visions of a famous deceased architect and these talented developers, I respect the visions and views from my neighbor's home more. Please consider preserving the character of the neighborhood as much as possible, and encouraging the development to take place behind our homes as a last resort. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Peter?
I just want to, Peter DeGolia, I live on Compton Road, the C2, I think it is, development, the townhouses would be directly behind my house. If I had my way, the city of Cleveland Heights would purchase this property and keep it as a park. That will never happen, and we know that won't happen. We also know that the previous owners attempted to sell the property to Belfair, that would have really changed this property, and we know that whoever purchased the property, or might purchase it in the future, could do something different, but we have a system, we have systems in place where the public can raise concerns and have discussion, and our city council, our planning commission, our Landmark Commission have to make decisions about things, and I trust you to make good decisions about those things that face us. Do I want buildings, you know, do I, let me put it this way, this is borrowed land for the neighbors, we don't own it, but we sure take advantage of it, we, I walk my dog every single day through that property, I look out my back windows every single day and see that property. I want to preserve that synagogue, it's beautiful, I want to preserve as much of the land as I can, if possible. I know the track record of the current owners, and they have a very good track record, they have worked with us. As Rachel said, we've organized community meetings around this property even before the current owners purchased the property, and our advocacy has been to try and preserve as much of the land as possible. I've listened to their proposal, you know, and they absolutely want to preserve the synagogue, and they realize that to be able to preserve the synagogue, they have to have a viable business plan to maintain income to sustain the property. One of those things that they're doing is to do, is to propose a geothermal heating system, which will substantially reduce their heating costs. Sounds logical, sounds like a very good plan. They also know that they need other additional income, and that's where part of the housing initiative, I think, comes into play. They also have a plan to involve, to establish a Masters of Fine Arts program, and for that to happen, they have, they've been negotiating for that to happen, and need, want-- to, want to have apartments available to students to rent who will live on the property and use the property as part of their MFA program. At the same time, their intention is to have some of those 30 apartments that are built available to local residents to rent. We could use that. We've lived in this neighborhood for 31 years. 31? 34 years, maybe it is. A long time. We remember what it was like when the daycare center was being used very actively. We remember what it was like when the synagogue was used very actively. There were, the entire parking lot would be full of cars. So when Adam says that, you know, it can't, that one lane off of Uklahites Boulevard can't sustain that kind of traffic, it did for many, many, many years. In fact, not only did the parking lots get full with cars, but our, but our street was full of cars.
Peter, I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you.
Okay, you've got, you've got the idea.
Yeah. We have one more. Elaine, I know you just got here, but you're up. Three minutes. Just state your name and the street you live on.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Price. I live at 3390 De Soto, in Cleveland, obviously, in Cleveland Heights. I'm part of the Boulevard Neighbors Group. I've been involved with this Park Synagogue project from the beginning. I'm very much in support of everything that I have seen and heard from the developers to date. Peter used a phrase that I think I introduced to the group. I used to be the CEO at the Holden Arboretum, and we would stand on part of our property, 3,400 acres, and look out across Jagga County and Lake County and say, oh, isn't this gorgeous in autumn? And then my conservation director and my horticulture director would look at me and say, and we don't own it. It's a borrowed landscape, and the people who own the property can do whatever is legally allowed to do with it. So when I first bought my house, I used to live on Berkshire, and my walks would be at Kane Park. When I bought my house on De Soto, I actually suddenly discovered Park Synagogue and used to walk there. And so I'm very pleased with the balance that I see being proposed by the developers to maintain some tree canopy, to maintain some natural space, but also to do smart, intelligent development on the land that they are now responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the people that spoke. I would like Josh or David to speak to the issue of where the, you know, where the townhouses are being built, and could they be moved away from the property lines of the, of the residents on Compton?
Well, we see that the townhomes as a first phase in order to try to establish a market. I don't think if we wanted to build on Mayfield Road right now, there's proof of concept that we could do so. It also just makes sense for us to start on a smaller scale. We are proposing something that is the same height as the homes in that area. It's no different. And I just sort of friendly, friendly disagree with the, with the notion that like this was a tranquil, serene space that needs to stay that way forever. I think that's, that's a mistaken form of thinking. I think that you had, someone mentioned, over 2,000 families who were there. They were there after school. They were there on the weekends. They were there for classes at night. I don't think we could take what's happened in the last few years, especially post-COVID when they really closed it down, freeze that in time, the number of people using it after COVID, and say that's the best Cleveland Heights can do. I think we can do a lot better than that. We could responsibly develop this area and not change its character. And I think one other thing that was mentioned is, you know, the zoning code as is, what will permit us to build, I think it's 145 single-family homes. But then we'd be talking about losing all the forested area, not having pathways to the ravine. So I'm not, I'm not really sure how that would represent my understanding of a conservation development.
I appreciate that. Questions from council for either staff or the, or Sustainable Community Associates? Yes, please.
I'm concerned how few people are actually here tonight. And this is a major change that we're being asked to vote on. And we're having the public hearing, and then we're expected to vote on this right afterwards. I guess I question why we're linking, you know, our voting on it in proximity to this public hearing. First, let me say, I support this, and as I said last week, I believe, at the Planning and Development Committee. Are we doing an adequate job getting information out into the community, most of which often don't pay any attention of what's going on until we actually vote? And this is a significant change, and I understand this developer has, and I, again, I support this plan, has only got the best intentions. But once we make the zoning change, that's it. And what's the, you know, stop another developer or this person adding, or this developer adding density beyond what was proposed or envisioned, or what the Planning Commission may eventually vote on?
So a couple things that you mentioned with regards to notice. We have a project website related to this, so there's information on the project website. The Boulevard Neighbors have been great partners in getting word out to the most impacted folks. And I think it's just, just the matter of fact that people, particularly when they support something, they don't come out, particularly on a March relatively cold evening. But the language of the zoning code in Chapter 1119 does not require council to vote on this the same night as. It's on your agenda, but you do not have to vote on it tonight. So just getting that out there, that's why we worded our recommendation the way that we did, which was, should you decide to close the public hearing, we would recommend approval, but you could keep the public hearing open. And the last point that you made, Councilman Cobb, is that I think the beauty of this district is that each step along the way, including the development plan and design guidelines step, have to have approvals by at least one body, which is the Planning Commission. But actually, in that case, it's, that comes back to you. So if you, if that development comes back and you don't like the townhomes, those guidelines can be changed, or you cannot approve those guidelines that would permit the townhomes in that location. This is just putting that overlay district on the site. So there's many, many more bites at the apple after this.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Chris?
I could follow up on the point raised by Councilman Cobb. So let's say that they later, the developer later chooses to have 60 units in that C1 area. If that is legally permitted, are we still allowed to use that as a reason for voting against them deviating from the plan that was presented to us?
So if the plan says, like it does now, 30 units, and they want to build 60, they've got to come back to the Planning Commission in a public meeting and modify the plan, and everybody can come out and say, we're against 60 units here. So that, they cannot just go and build 60 units. That has to be approved by a body--
Okay, so it would be okay, it would be permissible for the Plan Commission to say, this deviated from the initial plan?
Yeah, that would, that's a discretionary approval on their part. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
We've had vigorous email discussion on Compton Road about this. We've had, we've had, we've had lots of Zooms. We had a tour of Park Synagogue where we had two different groups go through way back, and we got to go inside, which was pretty special. So people feel like they've had a lot of discussion. This is a meeting to approve a zoning change, and I'm not sure everybody sees it as so critical to come out for. But there's a great deal of interest in what's happening.
And I appreciate that. It's just that, I know that when you have pros and cons, the cons think most of the people are with them, and the pros, you know. So, so I mean, that's, I don't need you to actually comment on that. Adam, I'll give you the same 30 seconds. Walk up to the mic, please.
On some of the same email chains that Rachel is, and she's got hers, and I've seen other email chains that have voiced concern, have wrote to me separately, saying that there is a very vocal minority in our street that is extremely vocal and passionate, has been involved from, from day one with this developer, and may even feel as other teammates. That's great. There's a lot of people whose backyards are on this property that do not want condos in the backyard, even though they would love to have the development and have the site revitalized and the building revitalized. That's all beautiful. I just think there's a better way to do it without putting condos as phase one in your neighbor's backyard.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from, yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask Adam a question?
Yeah, me. We've got to wrap it up.
How much publicity or word has gotten out, would you say, in the neighborhood? Is, do you think most of the residents, even though most of them aren't here tonight, are aware of the proposed development, including these units that are proposed to be built?
I'm not sure of the plan. We all get the letter in the mail that says that, you know, the large docket number, the 16-digit number that says there's something happening tonight.
Right.
But it doesn't say they're putting condos in your backyard. It just says there's a rezoning. I think we've had our community meetings with Boulevard Neighbors, which is an email chain of 40 or 50 neighbors throughout the Uklahites neighborhood, that has had some of the meetings with plans, 80. But the Zoom calls range between six to 20 people, depending on the ones I've been on. So I'm not sure if people realize exactly what is being planned. In fact, tonight, in fact, tonight's the first time I saw, I saw that the area between Compton and Ivydale is going to be developer, the trees are currently there. That was proposed as another development. I think we originally saw maybe two or three groupings of condos. Now there are seven, so that's the first I've seen that.
All right. Well, thank you for that. And you have another question?
I think you wanted to weigh in.
You know, you may be mismetaphorically, that's fine, but what we've proposed for our first phase are not in your backyard. Just for anyone watching, to be very clear, they are the same height as the homes on Compton. They're the same setbacks that are all over the neighborhood. They're no different. I understand someone might not want something to change, and I appreciate that. But we're not doing anything out of the ordinary on that site that would already exist in the neighborhood fabric. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Unfortunately, we have another meeting that we need to start now. Director Zamp, did you want to wrap this up, or anything else we need to do?
All you need to do right now is just hold the public hearing, and so you can choose to, I guess you probably should close the public hearing and/or--
I was going to ask the Assistant Law Director if we could continue our committee of the whole meeting right here. And I want the record to show that Councilman Posh has joined us.
More questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there an urgency to vote on this tonight versus our next meeting?
There's no urgency to vote on it tonight.
Can we, not just for this project, but projects going forward, can we make this part of our city email blast? Then that goes out. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I have a continuing concern that we have to exhaust every avenue that we have to put the word out about what is going on and the potential impact. And then if someone comes in later and says, well, I wasn't aware of it, it would be difficult to say, you know, there was not enough information provided. Because how many people actually end up going and taking a look at agendas?
Very few, no matter what the topic is.
Right.
All right, thank you, Councilman. All right, so we're going to conclude the public hearing, and Chris, I wanted to ask you, can, can we just go right into our committee of the whole, or do we need to stop this meeting? And so, okay, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 6:45.